I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, September 6, 2022 Northtown Council meeting to order. A moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the true government of this country. One nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call, please?
Rebecca Smith?
Here.
Keen Jones?
Here.
Rashad Bates?
Here.
Tiffany Henley?
Here.
Dustin Queenan?
Here.
Heather Lewis?
Here.
Thomas LaPera?
Here.
Can I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Executive session announcement, we had an executive session tonight on...
Personnel and real estate.
Personnel and real estate, thank you. Announcements, Madam Vice President?
I don't have any announcements. Does anyone from council have any announcements, any events? No?
No. Madam Secretary, can we public comment?
Yes. Mike Kingsley?
Good evening, Mike Kingsley. Stager Street, Northtown, for the Hospitality Center. First of all, I just want to thank Derek and Tommy and their departments for a great job this morning getting people out of encampments where they were down by the creek. I appreciate it. I was out there and saw them and was very pleased to see that. Secondly, just want to thank Tom for coming out with me a couple of weeks ago, visiting some of the encampments, meeting some of the people. I think it's important that people understand that the homeless are people, and I think Tom saw that that day. Anybody else that would like to join me sometime, just let me know. And I also just wanted to let you guys know that we're going to have a series of town hall meetings at the Hospitality Center, and some of you, most of you will be getting invites very soon. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Patty Telles?
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Patricia Telles. Y la cuestión es que...
Good evening, my name is Lisa...
Patricia.
Patricia Telles.
Mm-hmm. Este, y pues lo que yo quiero es que en el lugar donde nos pueden dar un permiso para vender comida, yo vivo en la 424 East O, ahí vendo comida, entonces, en el lugar que hemos ido a pedir información, no hay en inglés.
I have tried to get information about having my own restaurant, and while I'm doing that, I don't get responses in Spanish, so I would like to request some support in the municipality where I may able to go and speak in my own language.
Por eso, pues no hemos podido avanzar porque vamos a pedir informes y pues todo es en inglés y pues uno no lo entiende.
For that reason, I haven't been able to advance in the progress of this because I go and I don't receive the information in Spanish. So I would like to get more support, more support within the municipality to obtain translation in Spanish.
Y también hemos pedido información de las zonas donde podamos vender, pero pues uno no entiende inglés.
We have asked about information on zoning in regards to where we can locate our own business, and we haven't been able to obtain that information. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Muchísimas gracias.
I'm not sure if the first name is Lucas.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Isaura Lucas.
My name is Isaura Lucas.
Yo vivo en la 149 West Dela A.
I live in 149 West Erie Street.
Yo tengo quince años aquí Estados Unidos.
I have been living in the state for fifteen years.
Y yo lo que, lo que quería yo decir, que este, los niños que, los que han, en la escuela, los que toman el bus, que haya más seguridad de los niños.
And what I want to share with you is for the kids, when they are in the bus stop, a day she wants to ask for more safety, for somebody to take care of the kids while they are waiting for the bus to come.
Porque la, los que vienen en el bus de la media school, luego ahí es que se vienen, hay mucha pelea en el bus. Por este año no, pero del otro año que pasó sí, hay mucha pelea.
From last school year, there were a lot of fights inside the buses, precisely the one that comes from middle school, and that is a concern that I have.
Este es todo lo que yo les quería yo decir, muchísimas gracias.
That is all that I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perla Delgado?
Hola, buenas noches, mi nombre es Perla Delgado, yo vivo en el 335 de Wells in Marshall.
Good evening, my name is Perla Delgado, and I live in 335 West Marshall.
Yo soy voluntaria en la Asociación Unidos para Servir Norristown.
I'm a volunteer in the foundation called Unides para Servir Norristown.
Y nosotros queremos pedir su apoyo para que nos apoyen para, con la iniciativa que tenemos de ayudar a la, pues ahora sí que a los inmigrantes que están en un proceso ya, para que puedan conseguir su licencia de manejo.
I would like to request your support for the immigrants, the newcomers that need to drive in the process to obtain their driver's license. We would like to get your approval or your help in that process.
Ya que pues nuestra intención es literalmente cooperar con ellos y cooperar con, pues ahora sí que con la comunidad para que todo esto se regule de la mejor manera.
Our intention is to cooperate with them in order for them to be legally stated here to drive in the city, here in the borough.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Agurto?
Buenas noches, I speak Spanish. Ah, mi nombre es Denisa Agurto y soy voluntaria en el Comunión para Servir.
Good evening, I'm going to be speaking in Spanish today. My name is Denisa Agurto, and I'm a volunteer at Unides para Servir.
Ah, siguiendo con lo que Perla dijo, ah, somos una organización que ayuda a los inmigrantes a obtener sus licencias de conducir.
Continuing with what Perla said, we are an organization that is helping to provide and to continue the support for the community.
Ah, muchos ya me conocen, soy organizadora comunitaria desde hace muchos años.
A lot of you know me, I'm a volunteer and I'm an organizer, community organizer for a long year now.
Ah, una de las grandes cosas que hice al principio de ser organizadora fue hacer, a cabillar con los representantes en Harburg.
One of the major things that I have completed in my life, in my professional life here in the town is to obtain the support from...
The who, the supporter of the representative?
From the, from the state's representative.
In Harburg.
In Harburg.
Ah, nosotros fuimos uno de los primeros gestores en que se hiciera la HB 1648, que fue introducida por Mr. Cogan en ese tiempo.
So we were one of the first working with the type of visa called HB 1648, introduced, proposal introduced by?
Ah, Mr. Cogan.
Mr. Cogan?
Representative.
Representative.
Nosotros luchamos por más de cinco años para obtener una licencia de conducir igualitaria para todos los inmigrantes.
We fought for almost five years to obtain a driver's license, like the same driver's license for all, the same, the same ID.
No pudimos conseguir nada en ese momento para todos.
We couldn't obtain that at that time for everyone.
Pero sí conseguimos que se dieran los cambios que Perla hizo para obtener licencia de conducir para los inmigrantes que ya se encuentran en el proceso.
But we obtained, we didn't obtain what we were fighting for at that time, but we get, we did obtain the changes that currently has been implemented in the...
¿Dónde implementados, en dónde?
En el... En Pendot, in Pendot.
Ah, actualmente sabemos que hay muchas organizaciones trabajando para empujar una nueva propuesta.
Currently, we know that there are a lot, plenty of organizations working on this proposal.
Nosotros creemos y estamos seguros que Montgomery County con la fuerza que llegó a que estas propuestas se llevaran a cabo.
And we are sure that this is happening because the Montgomery County, the agency in the Montgomery County has worked on this.
Muchas de las reuniones se llevaron a cabo aquí en Norristown, y yo creo que esos logros fueron de Norristown y para los residentes inmigrantes de Norristown.
Many of the meetings were held here in Norristown, and I believe that one of the reasons why they have achieved those changes are because Norristown and the Hispanics in Norristown are supporting and fighting for this fight.
Por eso pedimos que la resolución que ustedes puedan emitir en favor de que estas iniciativas se sigan dando.
For that reason, we would like to ask that for the resolutions that you might be able to provide in order to continue with the fight.
Sé que muchos de los personas que están sentadas ahora ahí como concejales son nuevos y nunca vieron antes lo que nosotros estamos haciendo.
I know that probably many of you who are here sitting down on this table are new and you haven't been able to see what we have fought the last years to obtain the changes.
Por eso otra vez pongo y me paro frente para decirles y pedirles que nosotros como inmigrantes ya hemos avanzado pasos y que podemos seguir haciendo la diferencia si ustedes nos siguen apoyando.
And for...
Pero, un apoyo genuino para las organizaciones que trabajan por la comunidad.
And for that reason, I came today, here today again to explain you how hard we have worked and how much we have achieved so far, that we want to continue fighting and we want you to be informed about what had happened in order for us and your support, the support that we are requesting in order to move forward.
Eso es parte de la comunidad para la comunidad, y yo estoy convencida de que si ustedes nos apoyan, nosotros podemos hacer mucho más por la comunidad y vamos a estar seguros. Una licencia para todos es la meta, pero mientras eso llega, yo creo que estoy convencida que una licencia para los inmigrantes que están en el proceso vale la pena, y está valiendo la pena. Nosotros en la organización tenemos ya desde enero ayudando a la gente, ayudando a la comunidad a sacar licencias, y si alguna vez quieren pasar por nuestras oficinas, son más que bienvenidos para ellos.
This is a proposal that is coming from the community, for the community, and with the community, and we are sure that if we obtain your support to continue this fight, we will achieve what we are searching for. From January 2022, we have been working in helping the community to obtain a valid ID, not the one that we were expecting without any, any sign within the ID, but one that is helping them to drive on the street. So you are welcome, she's inviting you to go anytime you would like to, to the agency that she represents, Unides para Servir, in order for you to be able to see what they are doing there.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We'll just get us...
Okay, we'll move right into the agenda with fire. Chief Wood done.
Good evening, municipal council, before you, this evening is Resolution 2255, authorizing a purchase in the amount of forty-four thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty cents from fire line equipment and a sell a truck company for upfitting and modification change orders to the ordered high water vehicle.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the change order?
動 Secretary?
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Keen Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, ayes have it, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Singh, Historical Architectural Review Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, before you, is a request to approve or deny the Historical Architectural Review Board applications which were received, reviewed, and recommended for approval by Harb for August 2022. As you all know, Norristown Harb receives applications on a monthly basis for exterior repairs and renovations for properties located in Norristown's historic districts. Those applications are reviewed by Harb members to confirm that the repair or renovations being proposed are in compliance with our municipal ordinance. Before you are two applications for 23 East Erie Street and 602 Noble Street, and the request is that they be approved as submitted or modified as mentioned on the certificate of appropriateness. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the Harb board applications received?
Still moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Keen Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, you guys have it, motion passes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Chief Wood, let's take us to Resolution 22-57.
Good evening, council, before you, you have a request to approve or deny Civil Service Resolution Appointing Industrial Organizational Solutions as an administrator for a written exam for entry-level police officers. As you all know, we're conducting our own test in a couple of weeks. These are the book, the company that we always use, we did the consortium, we're doing our own, we're using the same exact, exact company, so I recommend that you approve it.
Counsel, any questions? Counsel, move this one.
What is the cost of using the company I didn't see in our package?
There is no cost, we're charging people thirty-five dollars for the test, and the test costs twenty-five each, so we're actually paying for officers who'll be working overtime, so there's no cost to the municipality.
Thank you.
Counsel, Keen Jones?
Yeah, thanks chief. So you're on the entry-level testing. Outside of the exam, what does a person have to do to become an entry-level police officer? Is the academy required?
No, the academy's not required, we'll pay for that. So all you have to do is take the exam, it's not pass or fail, you get, take the exam, then you got three weeks later, you'll do the physical agility test, and you have to, depending on your age and your gender, could have certain qualifications, you pass that, then you get oral examination where you do an interview, based on that, you add them all together, and then you're ranked based on your score, and we'll come in front of you. Actually, I'm skipping some parts, you do background check, and also a physical as well, make sure you know you have all your fingers and, you know, things that you can see, you can hear, and pass all of that, then we try to hire you, so.
Got you, appreciate it. Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-57?
動 Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Keen Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, you guys have it, resolution passes. Resolution 22-58.
Good evening, council, before you, you have a request to approve handicap parking spaces for the following addresses, 6631 Noble Street, 620 Cone Street, 53 West Basin Street, and 1408 Art Street. I recommend that you approve it.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-58?
動 Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Keen Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, you guys have it, resolution passes, thank you. And with that, we'll go into departmental reports, and just go back to you, Chief Wood.
一 Second. All right, I think number one issue based in the department right now in the concern is morale based on the building conditions. Until we get that fixed, and it's going to be issues with morale, it's just everyday operations based on, you know, this day, for example, the rain led to like, you know, people quit being getting wet, dripping and things like that, so that's a challenge. We have like another year or so of that, so I think you're all aware of that. Crime, we were trending down in July, August went up a little bit, I think that some of that's based on, you know, Kazerah dying or whatever, so we had to, it was a big jolt to the department, so I think, but overall this year, we're still, still down in shootings, we're still down, significantly down in the number of shooting incidents, that's where the, people actually shoot and no one gets hit. I know it doesn't seem like that sometimes, but we are down. So we already discussed this, we're conducting our own test this month, which will be the first time in a long time, which I think is, that'll help with get people who want to be in North Town. We have eighty-nine people applied so far, I anticipate hiring eight people over the next year or so, so we should have a good candidate pool. Some people I know, they're really good officers from other departments, I think that they become part of North Town, you'll be happy with who we select. The vacancies that we've had this year are still impacting us, we're still down the deputy chief, one lieutenant, two corporals, and one vacancy for officer backed out the last minute. We have one in the academy, we have one sergeant that's long-term, he'll be back out for injury, he'll be back in maybe October, hopefully. We have a couple are injured, and we have one out for stress, so further impact operations, hopefully we'll be back to fully staff, hopefully sometime early next year.
Counsel, any questions? Counsel, Keen Jones?
Yeah, thanks chief. So I think this will be your first school year, like starting a new school year, and I'm just curious to know, are you going to be working with the district and around some of the issues she spoke on, some of the bus scene, and it's not always a municipal issue, but sometimes they overlap, so do you have some plans to really work with the district or, well, file a crime prevention?
Well, you know, we have that youth advisory council, they keep us updated on issues that are facing them, that's led by them. We also have a school resource officer inside Stewart, which is one of the, you know, our schools was challenging schools with young people fighting and things like that. It's Steve Sewell, who's probably my best officer in dealing with the youth, he started this year, but he's always been dealing with them, so I think that's going to really be impact. We haven't had issues so far, but the biggest problem we have in North Town when it comes to crime are the young people. They're being arrested, and oftentimes that out right away. We had three juveniles over the weekend who did a carjacking. They also were suspects in Roberts earlier this year when I first got here. So, we're dealing with the schools, but I think when they're outside of school, what we're doing, that's when we need to find activities and mentoring and things like that, but we already spoke about that before. So I think that's more important, because the school, they'll get in fights and things like that, we can handle that, we have a good relationship with Rob Mikowski, unfortunately, he's leaving to go to Upper Marion, but we're replacing him, we'll have the same thing. When something happens in North Town, we send an email and text messages to the school, let them know like, hey, this may come to the school tomorrow. That's something that started, I think we started that like at night, and really effective. And I talk to Chris Dormer all the time, the principal, Stewart, I know her husband, we're together in Philly, so I've got a really good relationship with the leadership of the schools inside of North Town.
Counsel, any other questions? Thanks chief. Chief Wood done.
Good evening, municipal council, the operational summary for the fire department. Year-to-date statistics, eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine emergency dispatches, our average response time is four minutes and thirteen seconds. Our busiest day of week is Monday at five o'clock. We've completed six-hundred-and-sixty commercial fire inspections, provided one-hundred-and-seventy-one public education, installed a hundred-and-eighty-plus smoke detectors throughout the municipality, visited six-hundred-and-nineteen homes to install those detectors. Our fleet out-of-service time for the year is two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-six hours. Number of training sessions held for the fire department personnel is four-hundred-and-forty, with a total number of hours of two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight hours. One of our largest achievements for, has been to improve reading for ISO. Again, on a scale of one to ten, we've improved our rating twice in the last forty years. Once in two thousand and sixteen, we went from an ISO class four to a class three, and just recently, we went from an ISO class three to two, which is a direct result of the commitment from the personnel in the fire department and the residents and business owners would certainly see that in their insurance premiums, so that's a huge accomplishment. There's less than two thousand fire departments nationwide out of the forty thousand that have this ISO class-two designation, so I'm quite proud of the fire department staff and what they were able to accomplish in achieving this, this recent ISO reading. And that's it.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Hold on. Thanks chief.
You're welcome.
Mr. Singh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few quick updates, council. We did hire an assistant code compliance manager, Keith Gordon, he started earlier or mid-last month, and we have restructured the department in order to make sure that we are able to serve the property owners, the business owners, contractors, realtors, and the residents in a more customer-friendly manner, and we are working on making those internal changes to make the services better. But at the same time, currently, we are also down four inspectors, so we're working at almost a sixty-seven percent staffing capacity at this time with being down four inspectors, but we're still very, very busy. For example, for our property transfer inspections, we've already completed the number of inspections we did in all of 2020, and it's only September 6th, and property transfers are still occurring, and I'm sure Ms. Jane can attest to that, we're getting a lot of use registrations coming in, a lot of requests for inspections coming in, and it's not slowing down, so we're doing the best we can to manage that volume of inspection requests, and at the same time, we are trying to be proactive as possible with doing the rental inspections. And also with construction, there is a lot of construction activity that was going on over the summer, we have a crane downtown for the, where the Montgomery County Justice Center project is, Mr. Jones and many of the department heads actually also visited the site last month to see what's going on there and visit the, the construction site, and, you know, we are kind of phasing into our fall season now, so it is going to slow down a bit, but it was definitely a very, a very busy summer for us. Earlier today, The Times Herald had actually written an article about Montgomery County being the sixth highest in lead paint exposure, I'm not sure if everyone had a chance to see that, but it did mention that Pottstown, Lansdale, Abington, and North Town residents or children are the most affected, and because of your leadership last year, you guys have passed the ordinance for our lead poisoning prevention and lead hazard control ordinance, so in the article, it did mention that North Town is the only municipality in Montgomery County doing anything about lead paint, and that's because of your guys' leadership, and I'd like to report that we actually have, as of today, over five-hundred-and-fifty housing units that are certified as lead-free or lead-safe. So I did want to share that with you, council, and then the only other update I have is one of the other ordinances that was passed last year was our contractor licensing laws, and following the new regulations and requirements, as of date today, we have issued over six-hundred-and-twenty licenses following the new requirements, so those are the updates that I have for you. Thank you, council.
Counsel, President, I think I might have skipped somebody to speak, I thought he said he was a presentation president. Did I skip you, Mr., I can't read it actually, Sean, Mr., I skipped you for public comment?
No, no, I didn't want to comment, I'm, I'm going to meet after the official trip.
Oh, okay.
I'm not here to comment.
I saw your name here and thought maybe you were speaking, okay.
Your approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Singh?
动
Counsel, Keen Jones?
Thanks, Amrider. When I think of code enforcement and all the other departments, like hiring, is there a pipeline into the career of code enforcement? I know, you know, protective services and things following the fire and police, is it something that we can look for folks who want to maybe change careers midway?
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely, there's definitely a big push right now, there's actually a big push by the industry ICC, which is International Code Council, there's an actual association that writes all of the model codes that all of the states and all of the cities across the country have adopted, and one of the big pushes they're doing is to go to high schools and technical colleges all throughout the country and let them know about the field of code enforcement. Generally, people become building inspectors after they've phased out of the construction industry, once they've spent ten, fifteen, twenty years and they don't feel like doing physical manual labor, that's when they usually transition to this side of the industry, but unfortunately, because there's such a labor shortage in the construction industry also, people aren't leaving that sector to come into code enforcement and building inspection, so there's been a big impact because of that shortage, but there are a lot of trainings being done, and one of the things we can definitely do is we can get ICC to maybe come out and do a presentation to the school district, and, and hopefully we can do like a high school training program here where they actually have been successful in other cities last year where they actually just started this program, where before you graduate high school, you can actually graduate with your residential building inspector certification, that way you can become an entry-level inspector or your property maintenance and housing inspector certification, so I can definitely share those resources or that program with Mr. Jones, and if that's something council would be interested in, you know, sharing with the school district. But that's, that's where it is, and we have, we do try to encourage people to apply for the positions, we've actually changed the, the job descriptions to make it easier for people to come into the industry. We've actually changed the job descriptions to make it easier for people to come into the industry and that way we can train them. And recently, I know one of the comments earlier was about having somebody bilingual to assist with, you know, questions and things like that. So we did have one person who was bilingual on the staff before at the, at our admin, you know, frontline. But due to staffing changes, that person was no longer here. But we recently hired a new team member who is bilingual in Spanish. And one of the things that we have actually discussed previously with Mr. Jones and Ms. Jane is possibly doing, you know, more forms in different languages and stuff like that. But anytime somebody does need assistance in Spanish, we do have an inspector also that is bilingual and then we have once again somebody on the front line that is bilingual to assist with that. So that's, that's where we're currently at with the staffing. Counsel, one more, Jones.
Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, eyes have it. Thank you.